Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting for June 1st, 2021. We are now reconvened from closed session. And before we start with the pledge, a note for those of you out there paying attention, item number 14 has been pulled off of the agenda for tonight. With that said, the pledge will be led by Councilmember Mike Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. We have no presentations or proclamations tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinance titles to read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one item. It is for item number 10, and it is a second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, Amending Chapter 5.38 of the Dana Point Municipal Code, Amending Regulations and Penalties Affecting Short-Term Rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. They will be enacted by one roll call vote. There are no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item number 10.
Okay. Mr. City Manager from staff?
Yes, we need to pull item number nine.
And any from the council? No? I will move the balance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. City Manager, item number nine.
Yes, really quick, and then I know our Assistant City Attorney is going to jump in. Our service provider for IT services has offloaded their IT division, and the recommendation is to continue using the same staff that are now with a new company. But there is an adjustment to the recommended action, and I'll have Jen Farrell chip in on that.
Yeah, the recommended action should be that the city council authorize the city manager to execute an assignment contingent upon an assignment and assumption agreement being approved by both the city attorney and the city manager. Effectively, there's a change that we're going to need to make to the document.
Okay.
But there are some timing issues, so we want to give you the authority to approve the document, but allow us to also make the change and not have to come back to you.
I will move the amended recommended action as stated by the Assistant City Attorney.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number 10 is the second reading of an amendment of the Dana Point Municipal Code, Chapter 5.38, for new and enhanced regulations and penalties affecting short-term rentals. The recommended action is that the city council hold a second reading tonight and adopt an ordinance that the city clerk has already read. Comments, Madam Clerk? Thank you. And I will state, we did receive, council did a number of email comments. They were distributed to the council before the meeting, and they've all had a chance to read and review them. The speaker tonight, Mr. Paul Wyatt from Dana Point.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wyatt, and I am a resident of the city of Dana Point. Before the second reading is approved on this ordinance, I thought I would at least weigh in on a few things that I thought were worth consideration. During the last two council meetings on this topic, it's been stated a few times that the Coastal Commission will not allow you to simply ban short-term rentals. That's a bit misleading in that short-term rentals are and always have been banned in the city. So this isn't about banning short-term rentals. It's about beginning to do a process to actually permit them. The council could enforce its code and shut down short-term rentals without any action or approval of the Coastal Commission. It already shuts down some of them, and it chooses at its discretion not to shut them all down. But that's purely on the city's discretion of what to enforce and not. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to all, since we have a number of new people on the board. Secondly, it's true, I think, that the Coastal Commission won't be pleased with that because they are in favor of short-term rentals, and they will look for some interaction between the Coastal Commission and the city to sort of use for leverage to get you to act and do something more than ban them entirely. So I think it's worth your caution to beware that they won't just, they're not likely to set just idly by on that. So a proactive approach, as we look at moving forward, is wise, I think, in that regard. I also think that there's an impression that HOAs are, you know, completely carved out of these actions that are being taken. Currently, many HOAs ban short-term rentals, as you know, and that ban doesn't actually change the intensity and the Coastal Commission's word, the intensity of access to the coast. But if the city were to remove its ban, then those actions by HOAs do, in fact, now change it because they, the city doesn't, you know, there's no reason for them to cause HOAs not to ban it when the city bans it because, you know, the city would block it anyway. Once the city removes that block, then it opens up HOAs to the same leverage that you have as a city, which is when there's some action within that HOA that's needed by Coastal, they may decide to use leverage to change the intensity. So that's important. Third is that Municipal Code 5.38, I asked the Coastal Commission directly as to what circumstances they would allow that to be separated out and not part of the LCPA, and they said none because they cannot control location, numbers, and kinds of permits issued without having the business rules in it. So they would never allow it to be carved out and recommend that review. And finally, as we've talked about, noise ordinances are the most difficult to enforce because you have to have a crew on site to do that. So I think it's important to recognize that removing the bans on events out of there will make it nearly impossible to enforce noise ordinance. It was a good preemptive move. I would recommend you rethink that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Okay.
Hello? I'm Joyce.
Joyce Clark.
Joyce Clark.
From Capistrano Beach. Go ahead, ma'am.
I live on Comino Capistrano in the historic Dohini House, number one. And right now, I've had my second, let's see, what's the right term? I want to, it's sober living house, but I think when I'm on your website, it's, anyway, houses for handicapped people. Residential recovery centers. Couldn't come up with that. Thank you. And so Mr. Dohini must have been prophetic in planning my home because I got a nice wide street for lots of cars to park on, which really works out well with all the employees coming and going with two major businesses across the street from me with only one house dividing them. And why I'm worried about SDRs, are you going to space them? Are they going to be permitted according to location? Am I going to get an SDR along with my two other businesses on my street with a more continual stream of cars and employees coming and going? That's my main question tonight. And if you are going to, then I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull a permit for an SDR for my house. Then will that protect me, that no one can have their SDR close to mine? Or are we going to look like Beach Road where there are every, every house? So that's what my concern is and why I'm here tonight. And I hope, I just got pushed in here, that I'm talking on the right subject. So, but I, I live on a short space of street, and it's very busy. And two nights ago, a car can, this is the fifth time since I've lived there that a car's come straight down this street and hit my wall and comes into my yard from the traffic going on that corner of Marias and Comino Capistrano. It's very busy. I just don't want to see any more businesses. My other question, too, is the sober living houses, are they not SDRs? Those, why, why are they not paying a nightly bed tax to the city? The people are renting the homes from the owner, are living in those homes less than 30 days. And I don't understand why we can't tax them as SDRs. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And since you had some specific questions, if you reached out to the city staff, they'd be happy to answer those for you in detail. At least one of those is a very, very clear and concise answer for. So thank you. Mr. City Manager, is there a staff report for this item?
Very brief one by our Community Development Director.
Thank you.
Certainly. This is the second reading of an ordinance that the council conducted. The first reading on May 18th. At that meeting, the council voted to introduce the ordinance and made some modifications related to the daytime guest occupancy as well as the response time from the owners. So those changes have been incorporated, and the recommendation is to conduct the second reading. Thank you.
Okay. To the council, any questions or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Question for council is, if we pass the second reading, is it final? Or do we still have a chance to come back to adjust it at a later time?
It would be final, and it would be effective 30 days after today's date.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions and discussion as well for staff. I'm looking at item number six and item 13 on the business regulation. Six says you got to have two off-street parking spaces. And 13 says, talks about a maximum number of vehicles, one vehicle per one bedroom. What is the difference between those two? Those two kind of confuse me a little bit. They seem to be the same.
The, I have number six is related to the standard for a single-family home. Granted, we do have several non-conforming, legal non-conforming residences that don't have two parking spaces. In those situations, the permit is still granted on the basis that it is a legal unit. Number 13 is the maximum of vehicles allowed to short-term rental, and that provision is allowed greater flexibility if the property owner can provide or demonstrate that there's ample parking in the surrounding area.
So, again, I don't know why I have trouble adding this up. So you have to have a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. Item six.
That's correct. That is the goal. That is the regulation. However, as I mentioned several times, those two parking spaces are not available.
Okay, so if you don't have two parking spaces, then you need to have, you can only have one vehicle per bedroom or two vehicles maximum.
That's correct.
And that's on the property?
Doesn't, number 12 or 13 does not dictate where the vehicles are parked?
Okay. Got it. All right, so you just can't have a bunch of, a bunch of vehicles in front of the house?
That is, that's the whole.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Sorry about that. And then item number 12, this one I really would like to have some discussion about, is, I love that it's, it's limited to two persons per bedroom and two additional persons in the short-term rental. I think that's great. What I think, and Mr. Wyatt has brought this up, and I agree, is how do you prevent the party? Right? How do you prevent the event from happening? If we're going to take out the wording that you can't have a party, which I'm not sure I agree with, but I get it. I get why we got there. The intent of this is to prevent the party. So how do you make sure that people are going home at a reasonable time? And how do you make sure that you get back to that number of two per bedroom plus two additional persons? For, for me, I would like to add wording in there that says you need to get back to the two per bedroom and two additional persons by 8:00 PM. So that at 8:00 PM, I know that the party's over. And I also think that we should, I think, two and a half times occupancy and 20 people is too many. I think that should say two, two times the occupancy and 15 people. And I get that what we're trying to do there, again, is, is the intent of it is rather than ban a party, it's, well, we're just going to try to control it by the number of people that are in there. You think about the side of the residents. If I live next door to a short-term renter, like our speaker that came here, I got 20 people in the house today, and then two days later, there's a different 20 people. And then two days later, there's a different 20 people. That seems to me to get a little bit too much. So I think massaging the wording there and then also ensuring that the party's over at 8:00 AM, at 8:00 PM, and nobody's going to start a party before 8:00 AM, that to me, I would love to see that, that type of wording in number 12. And then number 17? How do you, how do you do that? How do you make sure that there's not an unreasonable amount of noise? That's for city staff. I don't understand how that's, how do you, how can you manage that?
I would like to invite, is Jeff here? Jeff Rossler? Up to speak regarding the matter of enforcement of the noise, the new noise regulation.
Can I speak from here? All right. Do you mind repeating that question?
Yeah, number 17, where it talks about the owner shall ensure that the occupants of the short-term rental do not create unreasonable noise or disturbances. I love that. I just don't know how it's possible. How do you do that?
So that's the existing regulation that's been on record for the past five years. Essentially, the way that's been handled in the past is through the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So most of these noise complaints come in after hours. When that comes in, it goes to the Sheriff's Department. When the Sheriff's Department goes out there, they will write a report. And in that report, if it specifies that it was unreasonable and they ask them to go inside, then we consider that a violation.
What does unreasonable mean? I don't understand how you can manage that. That's...
So unreasonable, to this point, has been, if there has been a report written by the Sheriff's Department. I'm not one to, to look into that gray line. I have a small amount of discretion, but as a policy advisor, you guys write the policy.
If I could ask Captain Monaleone to chime in a little bit.
Absolutely. So when somebody calls the Sheriff's Department for a noise complaint, it's a disturbing the peace call or loud party call. For us to actually do any enforcement, the person who's calling needs to be the arrester. So they need to do a private person's arrest because our peace can't be disturbed. Only a member of the public or a citizen can have their peace disturbed. So that's what's going to get us to make an arrest. All of these calls are documented and forwarded to the city. So if we get called to an SDR that there's a loud party at, they don't necessarily have to let us inside. Right? I mean, we're governed by, you know, the regular laws that we have to be invited in or, you know, there has to be some legal right for us to get into the home. If it's just a loud party call and there's nothing, there's no crime scene, we can't go into that house. If the caller wants to arrest them on their own, a private person's arrest, then we can, you know, do some action. But other than that, it's, it's pretty limited.
And that's not just short-term rental, right? That's any house.
Regardless of short-term rental, that's anybody. Right.
Do you consider, if a, if a, if a neighbor takes a video of a party, is that considered in your evaluation or doesn't?
No, we're not allowed to use that. We can use it for further things down the road, but we're not going to make an arrest based just on that.
Okay. But you can go, can you, I don't know that arrest is what I'm thinking about is just at least, hey, let's break the noise up.
It's, it's an arrest citation, so it's a misdemeanor citation. We're not going to take that person to jail.
Got it. Okay. Okay. And then my next one is on, same, same thing for number 19. No outside noise from outside the short-term rental can be heard during 10 to 7:00 AM. How do you, I guess you just answered that question. It's the same, it's the same guideline.
That's correct.
Okay. So for me, I think that the discussion I'd like to have is around item number 12. The other ones, I certainly understand the wording, and I understand that it's difficult to put a thumbprint on what noise means. But I would love to see some verbiage in there on number 12 that talks about a timeline around when do you need to get back to two people per bedroom and two additional persons within the short-term rental? And then also that number of daytime occupancy, seeing if we can lower that.
Good. Anyone else? Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for our Assistant City Attorney. Hi, sorry to catch you there, Jen. Councilmember Valar asked if this was final. Just, just curious, it's, it's final, but as we, if we happen to learn something during our actual policy creation or if new technologies come up, are we never allowed to update these?
I'm sorry, I should have added that. You can always amend your ordinance once it's adopted, so.
Okay. All right. That, that's, that's pretty important. And then also, I don't want you to go into all of the Santa Barbara, but, but our speaker mentioned that, geez, we, we have the right to just lock down all short-term rentals right now. Would you, could you give me a summary of Santa Barbara?
Yeah, just to try to keep it a little bit brief. The Santa Barbara case involved the city of Santa Barbara, and they, they made a policy change without adopting a new ordinance that effectively prohibited new short-term rentals in residential areas of the city. And the, a private individual suit. And the court ultimately said effectively that that policy change was not effective because they did not go to the Coastal Commission and get it approved via a CDP or an LCPA. So the read of the case is that the Coastal Commission's position, when they effectively are requiring cities to allow for short-term rentals, so far has been approved by the court. The court didn't come out and say that, but that is the interpretation of where we think things are going in litigation.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing? Mayor Portemiller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Councilmember Valar, for bringing that up. There, there was also made that short-term rentals are banned in the city of Dana Point. That's not accurate as well. They're, they're not permitted, but we have never banned them. They've been here since our inception, but our code just doesn't speak about them. So by definition, they're not permitted. That doesn't mean they've been banned. So I understand where Councilmember Valar is going with this. We had a long conversation about number 12 two weeks ago, and this is where the council landed on this. So I'm not really sure I'm willing to, to rehash that out because I'm still okay with it. I think the hours you're speaking about are in number 19 because more than likely, that's where you're going to have the problem with the noises after 10 o'clock and before 7:00 AM. And so there, there is the banning of that, or enforcement of that noise ordinance in that time period. I think that'll effectively take care of that. We do have larger residences in the city that could easily handle 20 people. Can they all handle 20 people? I don't know because I don't know where all of them are, but I know some of them can. And that was more of the issue if, you know, you are here, you have other friends around. You may be visiting friends in Dana Point that want to come over and, and meet you at your short-term rental before you go down to the beach or wherever you happen to be going for the day. And so I'm okay with that because we did talk about, I think that the time limit on it from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, I know it doesn't speak specifically to that, but that, that's the idea is that that would be around the time that they would probably shut, start shutting down because that's when you are going to start having noise issues at night. And we keep our, we keep the beaches open, we keep, the parks are open until, I think the beaches are up till midnight, actually, even though they're not ours. They're state and county beaches. And I think the parks shut down at 10:00. So I'm okay with that. I understand where you're going with it. It, I don't think it's confusing, but you could put it in there, but that seems to be redundant to me. And besides that, it would create a first reading again, and we've been working on this, so.
Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick again, Jen, just with, if those modifications from Councilmember Valar were in there for 12, would it indeed go back?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, we've had two first readings on this, and I do think there, it is interesting input. Would have been happy to consider it last time. And I, the value of doing this this way is we can bring this back if we see errors. I, I, I believe holistically in what Mayor Portemiller is saying, and we've got no outside noise from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We do, it says no, we do have no overnight guests, which is the two per bedroom plus two. And I think holistically...
And I think holistically, our code enforcement can, can figure out where we're at in here. And, and this is a valuable tool for them to limit nuisances in our neighborhoods. The better, I'll get done in a minute, yeah. The, the better point I see that was brought up and something I know is a resident's concern is there is a disconnect between code enforcement and police services and how some of this stuff is handled. And we just need to make this, the idea of this ordinance was to allow you guys to work better together. Code enforcement won't always be there. Sometimes police services are going to be the ones responding. And you need to know how to interpret and they need to know what to look for when they go so that we find the bad actors and penalize them if they're violating the intent of this. And I hope that, I hope that what we're providing does that for you all. If it doesn't, I need to hear from the staff. You're the ones who are going to enforce this. If we find that our numbers are wrong, if we find the times are off, we need to know, we'll bring this back. We, and, and we'll fix it. But I'm inclined to move forward. Memorial Day was this weekend. It is the peak of the summer season about to kick off, and I'd like to have some better rules on the books so that our enforcement mechanisms, agencies can, can get out there and make sure that the nuisances are abated if there are any. So I, I do think it's valuable to continue to, to watch and we need feedback from you guys. If these aren't working, if the numbers are wrong, if the times are wrong, we can, we can bring this back and change it. But not putting this on the books tonight, I think is a mistake, so. With that, I see Councilmember Valar has another comment. Go ahead.
In the past two council meetings, I, I was the only one who didn't vote for the business regulations and, and, and I'd like to get there. And I don't think that going back to a first reading hurts that. I, I think that helps it. I think, uh, I think we're close. And I'd like to come along with the rest of the council. But I think we have to think about the side of the resident that lives next to a short-term rental property. He lives there and he's got 20 people having a party until 10 o'clock at night on Monday night. And his kids go to school the next day. And the same thing happens on Tuesday night. And the same thing happens on Wednesday night. And now Thursday night, there's a new family that's there. And the same thing happens on Thursday night and Friday night and so on and so on and so on. We've got to protect that. And I know that that's the intent of what we're doing here, and I, I totally applaud us for doing that. I just don't think it's strong enough on behalf of that rent, that, that owner that lives in Capo Beach that has two short-term rentals next to them. Like our speaker came tonight. I think that's a valid point. And, and that is where the spirit of where we're trying to get to is. And if that means we have to go back to a first reading to get all five of us there, then yeah, I think we do that. I don't think that, that we need to push this for the sake of pushing it. I, I think we can get a lot closer. And I'd like to see us try to get there. I don't, I think 10 o'clock is too late. I think, uh, that's too late on a, I, I, last night I had a baseball game until 10 o'clock and I told all my kids, this is way too late for you guys to be up. They're 12 years old. You need to go to bed. Same thing here. Having a party until 10 o'clock on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night is too long. And I, I would like to see us massage the wording so that it works in favor of the resident that has a short-term rental property next to them.
Thank you. I, I, you know, it's, I have a question for, for police services and code enforcement. Maybe for the city attorney. You know, we have codes, municipal codes that apply to all of the homes, residences in town. Would you, you know, do we not have noise ordinances that apply no matter what? Chief?
We do. I will tell you that we don't get a lot of calls at our short-term rentals. We keep track of things like that. And if there is a loud party, then that neighbor is not calling. You know, we can only go with what we get. And if there, if you live next door to an STR and there is a loud party going on, I encourage them to call because the evidence speaks otherwise. You know, we do have municipal codes that are in place that we can, you know, do things to help the resident living next door to a short-term rental, but that goes for everybody. There's, there's not specific municipal codes that we're going to enforce just because it's an STR. It's across the board for everybody. So, um, I mean, from a police standpoint, we don't have a big problem with STRs as far as noise complaints.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I guess what I feel, I, I understand what Councilmember Valar is saying. I, I feel like if a place has a party with 20 people every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night all the time, code enforcement is going to find something where that property is violating this ordinance and, and that property isn't going to continue to have a permit. I just, I just, and if they, if it is happening and we're finding that property that has a party every Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday night with 20 people all summer long, then you, you guys need to come back to us and let us know, hey, there, there's a hole in this plan and, and we need to fix it. My long-term neighbors have a party almost every Sunday night. They're owners, not renters, not short-term rentals. I get it. But, uh, anyway, I, I think my two senses, I think we should move forward with this still. And my, my direction to the staff would be, please let us know if this is not, if, if there are still nuisances out there that, that we haven't figured out how to, uh, how to mitigate. So. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Valar?
So if the intent of this is to corral the party and not have it on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, why not write it in it? I don't understand why we wouldn't be specific and have it in there so that if that is what we want to prevent, let's prevent it by writing it, the verbiage in there so that it's clear that there is no, and, and, and we do have the option of treating a short-term rental property different than a long-term rental property. I, I think comparing those two is irrelevant because we're talking about short-term rentals. We, we're making a policy for short-term rentals. If we want them to fall under the same guidelines as a long-term rental, then why are we even here having this conversation? Let's just let, let it play out with the laws that we currently have, the ordinances we currently have. We are specifically targeting short-term rentals so that we can have better control over them, so let's do that. Let's put the control in so that it's clear of what they can do and what they can't do. If that's the intent or the spirit of what we're trying to do.
Mayor Portemiller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Valar, I, I understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish here. I, I don't agree in terms of writing it in. I think the three strikes rule is very clear. If you have a short-term rental owner and operator, they are going to protect that property. They're not going to allow that party to happen Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night with these big part, because they are going to be violated. And I think we actually, instead of doing that, for a resident that has a bad operator next to them, I would rather just say, hey, you've been violated three times, your license is gone, you're no longer a short-term rental operator. That benefits that neighbor more than anything than me trying to write the perfect code. And did they actually violate or did they not violate? Because now it's very specific in there. This is pretty clear. You know, that's your max that you can have in this house. These are your hours of, we, we're going to monitor the noise. That's a little bit different than what I have. I, I think, I mean, I, I don't think we have hours of 10 to 7 on our noise ordinance for a, a, a resident of the city, not a short-term rental. I think I could be, have noise out until midnight up to a certain decimal level. And you have to have a staff out there to record that decimal level. So this is more specific. Uh, I think the, the ordinance is written in a way that if you do have a bad operator out there, our staff has the ability to violate them. And if we get it too specific, that kind of holds handcuffs to their hands, I, I think. So I understand what you're trying to do. I think this as written is going to take care of everything that you, you're, you're talking about because it'll violate a bad operator right away. We just heard, uh, Chief Monteleone said, we do not have, we're not having noise problems in short-term rentals. I hear from other operators that have long-term renters next to them that that's where the problem is. They have more problems with residents and long-term renters. The neighborhood I live in, there are parties there every night of the week. You guys don't under, you, you guys all know where I live and you probably don't believe that, but I live pretty close to the beach and there are parties there every night of the week during the summer. Not always at the same house, but they're around. And so trying to get so specific on this, I, I think, again, we're, we're, we're starting to overthink and we could, we could take this off and put a thousand more regulations on it to address specific issues like you're speaking about. And it doesn't make the, the ordinance any stronger. I think we need to give staff the opportunity to work with this and tell us, like Mayor Federico just said, is there a hole in it? And we're going to know that relatively quickly. But we need to start enforcing this during our peak season for short-term rentals so we can see what it's going to do. If that comes back as, as being a huge issue, then we, we will have to readdress it. We have another item coming up that the planning commission is looking at. That's the second half to this. And, and at that point, that gives us another opportunity, but Ms. Farrell just told us that if there's a problem, we can always amend our ordinance. But I think we do need to start collecting the data that we just currently are, don't have, or it's not a problem.
All right. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, do you want to take the? Uh, I guess there has not been a motion yet. Thank you. Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay. Anyone?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost?
Aye.
Councilmember Vexoric?
Aye.
Councilmember Valar?
Nay.
Mayor Portemiller?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Passes 4-1 with Councilmember Valar dissenting.
Thank you. That closes out our consent calendar and brings us on to public comments tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have any general public comments? Okay, we do have one. As you all know, there's, there's a three-minute time limit. All comments should be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum. State law prohibits city council from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Wayne Yost from Dana Point.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Wayne Yost. I'm a 41-year resident of Dana Point. In addition, I'm the Senior Vice Commander for the Veterans of Foreign Wars, District 2 in Southern California. I'm not a big purveyor of social media. Basically, I use it to announce events such as the Festival of the Whales, the Summer Concerts, Winterfest, and of course, Memorial Day, which we just celebrated yesterday. That being said, the comments have been flooding my phone and my computer all day yesterday and all day today regarding our Memorial Day ceremony yesterday. And they are just unbelievable. Not so much the actual agenda and the way it was conducted, but the positive feeling that the members of our community had by being able to congregate, being able to talk with each other one-on-one, and just being able to smile and see everybody else's smiling face. So I want to really thank the city, the staff, and especially our parks and our recreation department. They went out of their way to do the planning, organization, implementing of this event. I want to give special accolades to Monique Leon from our recreation department. She was there yesterday at 6 o'clock in the morning, making sure that all of the different components were set up and properly and stayed until well after 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And she really worked herself and her staff very well, and, and I think they really deserve our appreciation. Let me refer to my notes real quick. So we set up over 600 chairs. We filled every single one of them. We had several hundred people that were either on blankets, lawn chairs, or standing in the back. So we were approaching close to 1,000 people for that event yesterday. And I, I think that says a lot for the confidence that our city has in our organization. I want to especially thank our Sheriff's Department and our Orange County Fire Authority for their presence there. We did have the Orange County Sheriff's Honor Guard there. We specifically had them there because we wanted to honor our first responders who have been not exactly honored over this last year or so. Once again, I want to thank all the people who supported our veterans. I did take 11 World War II veterans out to lunch at Jimmy's yesterday, and they were in awe of the accolades that everybody in the audience had for them. So once again, thank you, City of Dana Point. You are great.
Thank you, Wayne. All right. Moving on with the agenda, public hearings. We do have one public hearing tonight. Item number 12, to conduct a public hearing and take actions necessary to adopt the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 budgets, including adoption of a resolution to adopt the proposed operating capital improvement budgets for fiscal years 22 and fiscal years 23, adoption of a resolution establishing the appropriations limit for FY22, authorized FY21 revenue budget increase, bear with me, there's more, adoption of a resolution establishing salary ranges and additional represented titles and class specifications, approval of FY22 budget calendar, adoption of a resolution FY21, 22 M2 eligibility submittal items to Orange County Transportation Authority, adoption of a resolution approving SB1 project list for FY21, 22, and other actions as listed in the recommended actions. Mr. City Manager, do you have a staff report?
Thank you for giving the staff report. Really quick, we've been working on this budget since, I will say, probably March 17th of last year when the impacts of COVID became apparent on our revenues. It has been a non-stop effort, but more recently on April 27th, the city's Financial Review Committee grilled us on the budget. And then we had a city council workshop last month, May 4th. Since that time, earlier this spring, actually, the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act. That's to provide some stimulus funds amongst others, for others, also to local governments. It was not apparent until the last couple of weeks exactly how much the city of Dana Point was going to get. So since the original proposed budget was given to the council on May 4th, we've updated the numbers. We received from the League of California Cities, some of the, uh, the inputs we needed to calculate how much Dana Point might be getting. Those inputs came out at about $6 million, $3 million accruing to this fiscal year and $3 million to next. So went ahead and updated all of the general fund budget essentially. I will give another update that the U.S. Department of Treasury, since I put these updated numbers together, also came out with their own inputs that I think improved upon the League of California Cities assumptions. And the numbers I'm using here are prob, as far as the stimulus money the city's going to be getting are lower than what we will actually be getting, but I'm not changing my recommendation at this point for the changes to the proposed budget. I'm going to go ahead and stick with them and it'll, I'm just looking at it as conservative. If we get a little bit more money, it will help the bottom line. But just to summarize what, uh, some of the changes really quickly for this fiscal year, and there's an action, I think, number four, adjusting our current year revenues for that first payment from the American Rescue Plan, increasing our revenues this year by $3 million. But also what this whole thing, what, what transpires out of this is essentially the city never had to use its general funding, its general funding reserves. We still had to use some designated account monies. We had money set aside that we used some of for unfunded pension liability, but also for our community investment account for, uh, projects. for, uh, projects to be determined. So we still had to dip into those. Uh, but we did not have to, uh, with the action proposed tonight, actually use our, um, economic stability reserve, which is the one we thought we were going to have to tap into. In addition to that, um, the proposed budget has updated that second payment of three million dollars for next year. Also, with some recent, uh, information from the, uh, travel industry, uh, we went ahead and lowered our, uh, transient occupancy tax projections next year and the following. Next year by half a million, the following year by a million. Uh, group business is, uh, projected to come back slower than what we were hearing. Um, in addition, there's some other slight adjustments, oh, slight adjustments. There are some other adjustments in the proposed budget. We've since, uh, May fourth, received our final Orange County Sheriff's Department contract. That's the next item on tonight's agenda. So I've dropped next year's proposed cost for that contract by three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then I made some mistakes in the budget and underfunded, uh, our rec, rec programs, uh, particular for seniors, um, and also our concert in the park lane item. Um, so I went ahead and bumped those back up to what they should have been, uh, to correct by mistake. And then, uh, that's pretty much, as I'm going through all of these. It does allow us to do, uh, uh, transfer from surplus, um, over to our community investment account in the CIP Fund, and also to fully fund, I had dropped for the next two years, the amount we'd be transferring into our facilities fund, um, and I was able to put that back to, uh, the normal level, if you will. So with that, there's a lot of action items here, and I'm available to answer any questions either now or after the hearing.
All right. Thank you. Um, well, I think, uh, before the public hearing, any questions for, for staff from the council? No questions? Okay. Then the public hearing is open. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then the public hearing is closed. Uh, I will move all of the recommended actions in the, uh, staff report for, uh, for the budget issues.
Second.
All right. Any comments, discussion? No? All right. That was easy. I, I, I think on behalf of all of us, I'll say, we've gone through this before. There's not a whole lot of questions or discussions because this is so well done, and we are in such a good position. So thank you to, uh, Mr. Kilabru and the staff for that. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you like to take a roll call vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost.
Aye.
Councilmember Vexoric.
Aye.
Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Five zero consensus.
Thank you very much. Thank you to staff. Um... Brings us to item number thirteen, uh, Orange County Sheriff's Department contract for FY twenty-two. Um, do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Uh, really briefly, the contract is for the same level of services, the same number of badges and support staff. Um, it was, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand and less than we had predicted, um, which I just mentioned is part of the budget item. Uh, two, uh, new things to this year's that haven't occurred since, uh, two thousand and two, uh, a request by the county to update the, uh, false alarms fees. Um, they haven't been updated almost in nineteen years. They did a fee study. Um, so this applies to the third false alarm and subsequent. Uh, so you get two free false alarm, uh, trips from the Sheriff's Department, and you start paying on the third one. And then the other one is our, uh, administrative fines for traffic violators. So there's a, a list of them, and those have not been updated in twenty-one years. The county again did a fee, as part of their fee study, updated them, and, uh, we're recommending just, basically, we, we still have, the council still has to adopt them in order for them to charge them. So that, that's the update.
All right. Um... Any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for the staff? Mr. Vexoric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to follow up on the, the fees, uh, that you just mentioned. Uh, Mr. City Manager, can you just explain to me, it's so the, the county raises fees. We are now, is, are they passing through to us? Why are we raising the fees? Can you give me a better explanation of, of what we're doing?
Yes, we contract with the sheriff to enforce the laws in Dana Point, and the fees that they're, they can charge have to be approved by this body, since they're enforcing our laws. Um, and if we don't adopt these, they're not going to be charging for these extra services that folks that aren't taking care of their alarm systems, um, occur. And it's, it's, that's, there's not a lot of that, but there is some, and this certainly deters or encourages people to maintain their systems. And then also, there's a laundry list of, of violations, um, including driving without a license, unattended vehicle on a bridge, probably doesn't apply too often. Um, various, uh, vehicle code violations, parking in construction zones more than seventy-two hours. Uh, so there's a, a list of things that have not, the fees have not been adjusted again in twenty-one years. And they're asking us, they've done the fee study. We can have them not charge for any of those things, but I don't think that'll help, um, with our efforts to, um, have these laws be effective.
Okay, ju- so just to be clear, though, when you say, I mean, if we didn't do this, that they're still going to enforce the, uh, these codes or, or these laws?
I believe what we were told is yes, they will enforce them, but they won't be a fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, hey, Mike, um, City Manager. When we do these sort of, uh, up, updates to our fees and the feasibility analysis, do we aim for net zero on these? Do you know? I mean, or, or, or do we try to get a little bit closer?
I think this is a little bit closer. Uh, but the city, but the county did a fee study to see what it costs for typical response to a false, false alarm call. So again, the first two are covered by, basically by our paying for their contract. And the third one, they're going to get a bill that we do get credit on our, on our bills for.
Good. All right. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, Mr. Kilabru, I think you just answered my question that we do, we recover those fees, but not physically. It's, it shows up as a, a reduction in our contract. This is a large, single largest expense the city has. And I was reading in this report that we have a reduction in South Division overhead of ninety-seven thousand dollars this year. Is that something we're going to be able to maintain as we move forward? Or are we expected to see this come back?
The cost allocations, um, and this is my opinion, not backed up by fact, but cost allocations, given what the county was going through this past year and impacts on their revenues, some of their cost allocations that their general fund also has to pay for, um, in addition to their contract partners, um, were temporarily adjusted. Uh, but there were also some changes to their, um, the number of staff that we, the number, the amount of space we had to pay for, for South Division's, uh, station. There were other costs, but a lot of it, in, in my read through the documents, is countywide al- countywide overhead that gets applied to all of their departments and funds. And then our share of what is the Sheriff's Department, um, were temp- not temporarily, but they were adjusted this, this year in order to help with the overall budget impacts. I don't think that you're going to see a sustaining of it, but there may be some savings. Um, it's kind of hard to explain. If you look at a IT department that supports the whole county, they allocate costs out to all their other departments and funds. If they had a hiring freeze, it means their headcount was down and their personnel costs were down. And when they go to allocate out those costs, your costs are down. If, if and when they do staff back up, because they're getting these federal relief funds as we are, um, I think you're going to go back to somewhat what we've typically been seeing. And it's across all the support functions, from the county clerk's office to the county CEO's office, wherever they had hiring freezes, you're going to see personnel savings. All those support departments get, costs get allocated out across the county. Sheriff's Department saves some money from having lower overhead costs, and they can only charge us our share of their actual overhead costs. So, uh, long, long story short, we might see some permanent savings, but I don't expect to see a lot.
All right. Thank you. So I'll expect, uh, Captain Montleone will figure that out, make sure, make sure that we keep those hundred thousand. One quick question, uh, the South Division Station, we're still being charged for that station, even though we basically have our own sub, divi- substation here? I mean, I remember when we, when we approved that item years ago, it was so, our deputies didn't have to go to Elisa Viejo to, to log in and get briefed and then spend that time driving back and forth. I thought all that was happening here. Why are we still being charged?
Two pieces to it. We pay separately for transportation. That's a per-mile fee. Um, so we expected to see more savings, except Captain Mona Leone has her deputies driving around a lot more. So we did see a little bit of savings maybe, but, uh, not a marked amount. Uh, we do have some of our staff at the station as well. We've got directed enforcement, and they've got support staff that supports the division, uh, from various investigations. And they've got the motor sergeant, um, that we share some supervision costs for. Um, so there are still costs there that we pay a piece of based on how many badges we have.
Right. Okay. All right. Um, so you said we pay a, a, a tr- a travel fee?
For the black and whites that we have, we pay a per-mile fee for that vehicle. That includes the purchase of it, the maintenance of it, the fuel.
Did we not buy those vehicles?
Not the black and whites, no.
Okay. I thought, I thought we owned the black and whites. I'm sorry about that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I, I, it is our largest, uh, expenditure in the city, and that's a policy decision that we make up here, uh, because we value public safety. My question for you, Captain Mona Leone, is do you feel, based on your knowledge of the, the needs for public safety in our town, that this contract resources your department correctly to provide that, that public safety?
That's a great question. Yeah, I, I do believe that we are staffed appropriately for the needs of the city. Um, you know, I, I will say, I'll, we can, we'll always take more, but per the contract, we're, we're staffed well. Absolutely.
How about per the, per the needs of the, based on your knowledge of the city? I mean, our, I understand that you're staffed pretty well. Are you staffed correctly? The right balance of staff for what the city demands?
Absolutely. Yes.
Um, and don't try to save money by not driving the cars. Have them drive the black and whites all the time. All right. Um, anyone else? No. Um, Madam Clerk? Uh, I guess we need a motion. We don't have a motion yet. I'm sorry. I will move the, uh, recommended action.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric.
Aye.
Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Miller.
As much as I don't like raising fees on my residents, I'm going to vote aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
That's a five oh consensus.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, item number fourteen had been pulled. That brings us to council reports. Mr. Frost.
I, uh, I will turn in my list of meetings after, uh, our tomorrow, uh, Ms. City Clerk. I just wanted to say, I, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the memorial ceremony. Uh, Wayne, you did a fantastic job. It was my first time. I, I was amazed. Um, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you, you, uh, you were fantastic up there. Um, Kirsten, you were very well spoken. Uh, my father and I, uh, father-in-law and I had a fantastic time, and it was, um, much more than I thought it'd be. So thank you.
All right. Thanks. Councilmember Valar.
I turned in my list of meetings just now, uh, before here. So I'm still, I'm still in the running there. I'm batting a thousand. Speaking of batting a thousand, uh, we had a great Memorial Day baseball tournament here at our fields. Um, the city manager was there. Now, that's the reason why I couldn't go to the memorial service, is because I was coaching a baseball team. Oh, look, there they are. Uh, that's my team on the lower left-hand corner, the twelve-U Tsunami Team. We had the eleven-U Tsunami Team come talk to us last week. They were at a different tournament, that they won, uh, the championship. We came in second place in an unbelievably hard-fought championship. You see the team in the middle, a couple of those kids I actually coached as well. They wa- that's why they won seventeen to nothing. Uh, I'm going to give a shout out to Tanner Rohan. He hit two home runs out of that park in Pony Field, which is huge, and two triples in the same game. He made one out the entire tournament. So it was really well done. Um, city, uh, teams from all over, from, from Olive, from Newport, uh, from, uh, uh, Escondido, uh, came and enjoyed not only our weather, our, uh, our, our, our fields are just fantastic. Um, and just, uh, like you had mentioned, just being able to be outside and see people's faces and running around, having a, a, a bunch of kids, uh, running around on a baseball field and playing some really good baseball. It was just fantastic. It's great for our city, um, and, and we, we thoroughly enjoyed it. So I appreciate, uh, the city allowing us to do that.
Councilmember Vexoric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish I had something more to say, but Councilmember Valar and Councilmember Frost said exactly what I was thinking. I was actually able to attend both the Memorial Day ceremony and, uh, and go to a couple of games, uh, in the tournament. I didn't get to see the twelve U play. Uh, but I, I did get to see, uh, the seven U play and the eight U, uh, play. And, uh, so again, a lot of pride in the city of what we're doing, both the community members, uh, people like Wayne and all of VFW members, uh, make us proud, uh, every year, all, every day, and, uh, as well as, uh, those of us, uh, who have kids in the league and those who volunteer their time to, uh, to help those kids in the league by coaching. So thank you, Councilmember Valar. Uh, so, uh, I'm just piggybacking on, on your comments. Uh, I, I will say that, other than that, I don't have anything to report, but I will turn in my list of meetings, uh, after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Mayor Protem Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, a lot of what I was going to say has been said. I unfortunately was out of town and was not able to attend, uh, the Memorial Day service, which is always one of the great, uh, services that, that the VFW and the city puts on every year. Uh, I don't know if everybody knows this, but we have three Marines that sit on this council currently. And for the grace of God, we were not celebrating them yesterday. We'll celebrate them in, in, uh, November for Veterans Day, because all three of them have deployed to the Middle East multiple times. So I want to thank them for their service. Uh, again, not honoring you for yesterday. We'll talk about you guys in November. Uh, but, uh, unfortunately, I didn't make that, that ceremony, but I will be there in November. And with that, I have turned in my list of meetings. And thank you for coaching those kids. I love baseball and I love Little League. So thanks.
Um, I, thanks. I have turned in my list of meetings, and I think probably the city manager will cover, uh, is it the eleven-U team that was in here last week? Right? Uh, I won't steal his thunder on that. Um, but, uh, um, you get to celebrate us twice in November. November tenth is the Marine Corps birthday. That's the real one. Um, uh, thank you to the VFW. There's, it's, we can't say it enough times, uh, and the city staff, not just the rec department, but, uh, there were a lot of city staff out there, even one who was there on her birthday. Um, thank you for putting that together. Uh, a family approached me, uh, a guy and his young kids from the city of Fullerton, and said they drove all the way down because our, uh, city's memorial service was the only one they could find in person that they could get into without, you know, prior reservations or limited capacity. And so, uh, that was really special. It was great to see everyone out there. It was great to see the trolleys running at the same time, uh, and summer about to kick off here in Dana Point. Uh, so it's, uh, it's a great time to, to be a Dana Point resident, to be here. Um, that's all I got. Mr. City Manager.
You guys already stole all my thunder, but I do want to point out that a team up on the top left were the kids that came in the last meeting and, uh, thanked the city for their support. And so the city is sponsoring their trip back to the, uh, World Series. Um, that is the eleven-U Tsunami Select, and they did go undefeated in the Ramona Invite Tournament this past weekend. Not only undefeated, but they mercied every team, which means they outscored them enough that they stopped the game, uh, which is quite impressive. The middle, the middle picture is our fourteen-U All-Star team. And again, as Michael said, there was a lot of standout performances, but that one kid that hit two home runs and two triples but that one kid that hit two home runs and two triples was abso, I was standing there watching the game, and those balls didn't just go out of the field, they went way out of the field. The team on the top right is the nine, nine-U All-Stars, which, uh, Jeff Rossler on our staff's son is on that team. They got second, uh, at a tournament that was held right across the street at the high school. And again, uh, Coach Valar's team, twelve-U Tsunami, was really fun to watch. They were in it to the end, like, literally to the last pitch. Thought they were going to tie it up, but it was, it was really fun to watch and to see all the families out there. And a lot of thank yous from the visiting teams from the other cities that, uh, might have normally gone to a tournament in another city, but we were the only tournament in a county, uh, for, uh, youth baseball. So, absolutely incredible. So, you know, as the signs on the wall say, let's go Dana Point.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, Madam Assistant City Attorney?
I don't have anything.
All right, uh, that wraps us up for tonight. Um, we will, uh, not be adjourning the meeting right now. We're going to be recessing back to closed session. Uh, we will come out and officially close the meeting when we are complete. Um, the next regular city, the next regular meeting, the City Council, will be June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at five P.M. here in the City Council Chamber located at three three two eight two Golden Lantern, Suite two ten, Dana Point, California. Please remember to shop local, enjoy your summer, we'll see you soon.